We probably ought to talk about it. We like to talk about good things.[12.01][12.01](Laughter.) Okay, item number six, Resolution 18-21, approving a plan development overlay for Prairie Commons subdivision. And again, as you all may recall, this has been in front of the council quite a few times. It goes all the way back to before 2004. It's had numerous different proposals. The economy had a lot to do with the very first one. But it's interesting that now here we are, 14 years later, and we're right back basically to where we started from, but maybe even a little bit better than where we started at. So Drew, you want to go ahead and present this?
Yes. So, as you mentioned, there was a previous plan that was granted approval by the City Council in 2004 that approved a 242 townhome subdivision along with about 19 acres of commercial. The plan that's before you tonight would have 242 townhomes and a slightly smaller 18.49 acre commercial site. But generally, the plan, as you've said, has been updated and improved a bit in the interim. The applicant's design team is here tonight that can probably answer in more greater detail how those changes have occurred. But effectively, we're looking at a project that has a very similar overall design in terms of street layout. But there's some changes to the building types with the new developer. There's been a change in terms of the land donation to the Batavia Park District, whereas the Batavia Park District would now be gaining approximately one acre site with this project on the east side of property, as well as a trail dedication which was part of the original There's two items in front of you tonight. One is the ordinance, which would be the plan development ordinance that in some parts would be amending the zoning map in some slight areas where land, the property lines have shifted with the current proposal versus the original proposal. There would be a plan development overlay. This project was originally approved with a plan development, and so this would be basically bringing onto the zoning map a new overlay district that would have many of the conditions and deviations that were originally granted with the original project that have been updated based on our current zoning code as well. There is a resolution for the plot subdivision, which is for the final plot approval, in addition to the preliminary plot approval. There is a subdivision variation, basically to address a lotting issue where our subdivision code does say that you do need to have street frontage for lots. This project was originally approved with lot envelopes that basically would be around the immediate building, give or take a few feet. And that's what the current proposal includes as well. So there's a variation for that. There is a building code variation that was also included with this request. Essentially, in 2007, the city, after approval of this project, did adopt the International Building Code, which requires sprinklers for all townhouse units. And the applicant is seeking, has worked with city staff, including the building department and fire department regarding the sprinkler requirements. And the city staff is currently working on an update to the building code, which would propose an alternative type of sprinkler requirement, whereas right now requires it in all living, or living and non-living spaces. But what is proposed by the applicant here and what would be contemplated with the future building code amendment would be to allow a 13D-type sprinkler system, which would be, basically, it's a provision that allows a little bit more limited amount of area that would need to be sprinkled, but overall, the same goal is met of sprinkling the property. So staff is comfortable with that recommendation, with that, and has included a recommendation in the ordinance for that. At the Plan Commission, there were a number of speakers from adjacent properties. There was discussion about landscape offsite that might be impacted. There was a discussion, duty utility work, although the applicant did note that all the utility work is contemplated in a manner that should not impact landscape. There was also discussion regards to unit types, overall impacts to stormwater management. There was discussion with adjacent property owners, most notably regarding the path area and the landscape that would be provided between the townhome units of this development, the path, and the single-family to the south. But there was no recommended changes to the project design with that discussion. So, overall, actually, one other item would be the, which staff has worked with the applicant regarding a sidewalk issue. We believe we've resolved that in the draft ordinance in terms of the conditions that are before you. And staff has been working with the applicant regarding language of one other provision, which I believe is Provision 7 in Ordinance 1821. So we're working with them on trying to clarify the language regarding building separation in regards to where the decks are located in our zoning code, how they're treated versus how they are located on the property. So staff is suggesting that the recommendation tonight may include additional revisions subject to city attorney review prior to being on council on the 16th. So staff does recommend approval of the ordinance and resolution in front of you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Unless the council has an objection, I thought we would just ask the petitioner if he'd like to present what he would like to present to us. Is it Lennar or CalAtlantic?
Well, I was going to be part of my presentation real quick. So, a long time ago, two years ago, it was Ryland. So I don't know if you guys remember the Ryland flag that was flying through there. And at that time, we were the eighth largest builder in the country. And then about two years ago, we merged with Pacific Standard, or Standard Pacific. Standard Pacific, which was the ninth largest builder at the time, which created the fourth largest builder, and we thought that was great and fantastic. And then about late November, my phone started going off at 5:00 a.m., and I realized something was up. And we wound up being purchased by the second largest builder at the time, which is Lennar, which now has created us the largest builder. So I've essentially worked for multiple national builders in a very short period of time. So systems are a disaster at the moment. But with that said, we are very excited to come here into Batavia. In my previous life, I was active developing inherently, did a subdivision called Johnson Woods and some other areas in town, and we had a great experience with it. Lived in the area, went on the trails, did the restaurants, took the kids to Batavia Creamery. So I think it's a great, great town, and we're very excited to be presenting this project in front of you guys today. Give you a little history on where we are today as a company. You know, we're in about 30 communities throughout as far north as Wisconsin, all the way down south is northwest Indiana. So we build up to Fox Lake, to Crompoint and St. John in northwest Indiana. So a pretty big footprint. Really, that's kind of just a quick overview of kind of who we are and what we are. You know, we build multiple products anywhere from age-restricted to townhomes to single-family, a lot like everyone else does in this particular market. So, again, very excited. I will let Rich Olson, who does a much better job of presenting our land plan, I'll let him come up and give you guys a quick overview of what that looks like, and then I'll kind of share with you the architecture and answer any questions from there. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
I'm with Gary R. Weber Associates. We're a landscape architecture land planning firm out of Wheaton, Illinois, and we prepared the site plan as well as the landscape plan. First of all, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you to talk about our updated plan. Hopefully get some good feedback from you as we move through this process. What I thought I'd briefly do is just go through, I know we're very familiar with the site, so I'm going to make this very brief, just go through the existing conditions of the site, some of the planning factors that we use to create the plan, walk you through the current plan itself, and some of the landscape features. As you know, the site's approximately 56, 55 acres. It's located at the southeast corner of Wind Energy Pass and Kirk Road. To the north of the site, we have agriculture farming. To the east of the site, we have the Fermi Lab and the Prairie Path. To the south, we have residential. And to the west, we have a mix of residential and commercial. The current site is bean-farmed and has an existing water tower site on it. So as part of the planning process, we always look at the surrounding conditions and what we term as planning factors for the individual sites. I brought this map along just to give you some of the things that we took into account in this patient for this plan. The colors that you see up there represent grade change. So for every color change, there's five-foot elevation change. The high point of the site is roughly at the, along Kirk Road at about 755. And the site gradually moves from west to east down to the low point in the green area here at 730. And that's where we're going to put our detention. We also look at access to the site. Now, we know that an easy location is at the corner of Wind Energy Pass and Kirk Road for one of our main entries. We also have an existing right-in, right-out at the southern end of the site. So we have good vehicular access for this particular property. We also look at pedestrian access. We have an existing pathway system that comes up just west of the savanna and butts into our site right at that location at the southern access. We also know that another pedestrian access, which is great for us, is along the Prairie Path, which is along the eastern side. We also look at existing natural areas on the site, and we look to preserve those as part of our plan. We have an existing wetland up in the northeastern portion of the site. A little bit of the dark green that you see here is some of the wetland that has come onto our site. We will be looking to buffer that and protect that. We also have an existing stand of trees along Kirk Road, and we'd also be looking to preserve those trees. So these are some of the things that we looked to, to help us prepare the plan that you see before you today. And I'm just going to run through this a little bit and walk you through it. So we do have those, as you can see from the plan, along Kirk Road. We have the two main accesses that we just talked about. Our commercial site, which Drew had pointed out, is about 17 or 18 and a half acres. And that transitions from the commercial into a mixed multifamily residential product. We have two different types of product. We have a front-loaded traditional townhome. And what that is, is the garage is on the front of the product, and you have a traditional backyard, and the architecture is also traditional in character. The second product that we have is a rear-loaded product, what we call a rear-loaded product. It's a more vertical product, and it has the drive access, the garage on the backside of the product. And on this particular site, it's hard to see, I wish I would have made them a little darker. The darker product is on the outside, and that's the front-loaded traditional product, so that you can see the driveways. In the rear, you'll have a traditional yard. The lighter buildings that you see, which are clustered in the interior, are the rear-loaded products. What's nice about this is along the exterior, we have a traditional style of living. And on the interior, we have a more of an urban style, which also helps us on the streetscape. So sometimes you're going to have garages with driveways coming out to the road, and across the street, you won't, which is nice because you're going to have guest parking also incorporated, because a lot of times you see driveways on both sides of the road. So in this case, we don't have that. And some of the parking is in the rear of the units itself. We've also, on this plan, from an open space standpoint, enhanced that and created more open space than the previous plan that was approved. You see in the dark, or the green areas, that's all open space. And we've got two nice, large, green space areas as you come in from the access drives off of Kirk Road that terminate into these public open spaces. We also have, as I noted, the low space of the site also has a detention, which will be naturalized landscaping. It's going to look really nice. It's going to have, it's going to be well landscaped, and there will be pockets of open water and lots of prairie plants. Just above that, we have the water tower site. But just adjacent to the water tower site, we've incorporated a large park area, which also serves as a pedestrian connection to the Prairie Path. We have also, from a recreational standpoint, have extended the path along the southern boundary that comes up from, on the west side of savanna. It runs along, all along the southern boundary, you can kind of see it in a really light white color. And then it goes all the way north along the eastern boundary and connects back into the Prairie Path. So that gives you a trip around the whole site as a whole. And, you know, we've paid special attention to the landscape, and I'll just show you a couple of the features that we're looking to provide. I just blew up one of the large green space areas that we have, so you can kind of see what we're doing in there. We'll certainly landscape around the entire area, and we'll incorporate seating areas and places for people to sit. And then these would be great spaces for whatever kind of recreational use out in the green space that you'd like to do. The central, there's a central green space corridor that is created because of the style of product that we have. So there's not a road in front of some of these units, which is nice, because we're able to then create a green space corridor that we're going to put a seating area in the center. And on either side, we're going to have these large green spaces for people to use. We also, I just want to show you a little bit, we've got an entry feature that'll help set off the entry to this project. It's not out on Kirk, it's set in, and it'll help to announce that you're going into a residential area as you transition from the commercial area. This is just a little shot here in the center of a pergola, and gives you an idea of some of the seating areas that we'll have in the site. I worked on this years ago when the original plan came through. Scott jokes, because he says, "When are you going to get a plan that's going to get approved here?" So we brought in the original approved plan, and this is really a comparative of the current plan. So on the left is the original approved plan that was done back in 2004. And the right side is our current plan. We've come a little way in the graphics, too, from then, from then, that time. But what I thought, I thought this would be nice to just show you the comparison of the two. There's commercial on the, up against Kirk Road, just in both plans, just like it was back then. The roadway system that comes in from Kirk Road is the same, two access points. The road pattern has changed slightly, but it's substantially the same style of road pattern. We didn't change the design from that standpoint. We still have the detention pond in the same general area. We've moved some of the detention to that area, which allowed us to create some more green space features on the site. We still have the large central green space corridor that you see here in the center of the site. And we've got the pocket parks. And we've actually expanded where you see the water tower, another park space because of our efficiency of our product and the design of the roadway system. And we're conforming to the setbacks and all the standards that were done back in the original plan. And we've worked really hard with staff to come up with different alternatives, but we're in substantial conformance to that. And I really appreciate Scott's, you know, working with him on this. And I think we've come up with a real winner here. We've taken a plan that substantially in conformance to the old plan, but we've improved it with several open space features and parks and things of that nature. And we're certainly excited to be here, and I think, hopefully, this will be the last time I have to design this. I'll turn it back over to Scott to just talk a little bit about architecture, and then we'll have questions.
Sorry, I forgot to introduce myself while I was rushing through that. I think I had too much coffee today. So my name is Scott Garrard, and obviously, I kind of run the land acquisition department over at Lennar here in Chicago, so I wanted to make sure I threw that out there. So with that said... Rich, what are you using, the keyboard here? There we go. So as Rich kind of alluded to, you know, we have two separate products. We have what we call the urban product, which is the one you're seeing here in the traditional. So the urban, as Rich said, has the garages in the back. And in this particular product, you can see, you know, we've got the brick elements on the outside, you know, we've added the gables, we've got some vents up on top. And this is a really popular product. This seems to be the one that a lot of people are going for these days. The reason being is that, you know, it kind of offers a three-story kind of feel to it. You know, you pull into the garage here in the back, and that, there's still, there's a room, there's a room that's used in the back on the bottom. So it's kind of like a bonus room, finished basement type of feel to it. And as you go up the stairs where you see the balcony, that's kind of where your main living space is, your kitchen, you know, your dining area, your, you know, family room and everything else. And then obviously, the bedrooms are located upstairs. And this particular product line will be offering anywhere from six to seven different products. And they'll range in square footage from 1,495 square feet all the way up to just shy of 2,200 square feet. So the 2,200-square-foot units would generally be the ones on the outsides, on the ends. They tend to be the bigger ones. And then, you know, you move in a little bit smaller on the interior. So there'll be a mix and match. It just depends on the market, what they're buying, everything else. Generally, you know, we usually have an idea of what we're going to put in there, and we'll try to change it up a little bit. We'll have an eastern in one section, you know, and chat them on a different one. So we try to change it up, but the outsides will all look very much the same on it. The other product we're doing is more of the traditional townhomes that, you know, people are generally used to. And again, you know, Rich kind of explained it. I think it's a really good idea in this particular product or project, especially because of the savanna, some of the existing subdivisions to the south. You give them kind of the backyard, creates a little bit more buffer. It's kind of the reason why we designed the product this way, kind of give that traditional feel to kind of back up to the traditional single families, and then kind of put in the new urban stuff up into the front. I wanted to mention one thing. We did work with staff, so staff had a really good recommendation of adding, you know, a little bit of brick there on the bottom above those windows. So we added that per their recommendation. And then you see here, I don't have a color rendering of it, and I apologize, but on any of the buildings that are facing a right-of-way or public street, we'll have a nice brick wainscoting going down the side, so that's where the eye hits, so they're not seeing just, you know, the whole entire empty side of it. So we kind of bring that and drag that all the way down. So that will be included. I wanted to make sure I at least showed it to you. Apologize, we didn't have a color rendering of it, but hopefully I won't have to bring one back in the future. But, you know, we're very excited about it. You know, on the traditional side of things, this particular product, we're only offering four plans. It's not nearly as many units as the other one. In this particular series, it's really 1,470 square feet all the way to 1,690 square feet. You know, the thought being is that, you know, you try to diversify a little bit, you know, when you're doing it. Those who aren't looking for that extra amount of stairs, or aren't looking for the little extra room, will probably go towards the traditional. I see probably more of a younger type of group going towards more of the urban side of things. With that said, you know, I've got my whole army here of guys to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Who's got questions?
On the urban plan?
Yes.
Now, the garage isn't included in the square footage, is it?
No.
Lucy, pull the mic up toward you.
Is the room behind the garage included?
Yes.
Okay. On that same?
Yeah, so it'll be closed off. It'll be just like a regular, you know, single-family home where you have the separate room. But yeah, so the square footage does not include the garage.
So on one of your grading plans, there was an existing, on the south side, there was an existing wetland? Is that no longer? It was like point, it was 10% of an acre. Is that no longer?
Anthony Martini with Mackey Consultants for the project. There is a small wetland on the south side of the property. It's about .1 acres. It is generally a low-quality wetland. There's actually some dumping being done in that wetland by, I believe, the adjacent property owner. That wetland will be mitigated as part of this project. That one will be impacted. The wetlands to the north are much better quality wetlands, and those will be preserved as part of this project.
And so with the detention pond you have, I mean, my concern here in Batavia is the 100-year flood that comes twice a year now.
Sure.
Okay. Will that detention pond be able to accept, because you have, the bulk of your site is flowing to that detention pond?
Correct, correct.
And so will that be able to accommodate that flow of water?
Absolutely.
Or will that be a danger to the savanna subdivision?
Well, two things. One, the basin is designed for the 100-year event, so we have designed the site to accept that 100-year event in that stormwater basin. It is adjacent to a floodplain area as well, and that floodplain area would be providing compensatory storage within that facility. In part of this, we are doing some grading modifications where we are filling part of a floodplain area. We're providing compensatory storage above that fill requirement. So we are actually providing more floodplain storage than previously, or than currently exists. For the savanna subdivision, we have submitted plans to the city of Aurora. Aurora has reviewed our plans and accepted our plans to date, so I believe we have addressed all their stormwater concerns.
Could you, could you help me? Could you define compensatory storage?
Sure. Say you have a bowl at a basin, and that's for floodplain volume for storage. Part of our project impacts some of that volume within that bowl. So the compensatory storage is we have to replace that volume. So it's a replacement volume, and then as part of that, we have to go above and beyond and provide more volume. So the compensatory is an equal, it's a trade-off, that you're doing some fill to kind of shape the site, make stormwater basin work a little better. But as part of that, you have to provide above and beyond more storage.
Okay, thank you.
Are you doing anything on the commercial site to manage stormwater?
Sure. For the, so in the previous plan, we don't believe the stormwater detention was provided for the commercial property. We feel that there was a supplement to, you'll see in the old plan, there was a small little basin. But we believe that part of this plan was intended that when the commercial site came on board, they were to do detention on their property or via vault. You'll kind of see it in the lower-left corner there, a small little pocket detention basin that doesn't really, it isn't efficient, didn't really serve. So what we've done in our plan is we've provided storm sewer along the north roadway and then the south roadway to connect, convey all that stormwater out of the commercial basin to kind of take that water. So when a commercial development comes, stormwater management will be provided. They would just have to build their site and their storm sewers on their site to connect into those large storm sewers.
There, in the corner, in the southeast corner?
Yeah. Let's go back. So generally, that large commercial area, we have two large storm sewer stubs, one in the northeast and one in the southeast of that commercial property. So they would connect, within that property, the stub exists. So they would, when they build out, they would just connect to that storm sewer stub that's available.
So we're, and Gary, maybe you can address this as well. So we're in the process of going through stormwater remediation within their first ward and creating, I believe we're dropping a 60-inch pipe coming down Kirk Road? Is that correct?
Well, we're connecting to the county system at Geese.
Okay. So my question is this, how does that affect, given that there's going to be more bandwidth for water coming through? Has that been taken, has that been taken into account with this plan as far as, because there's going to be water heading in that direction, correct?
You know, I don't know the watershed boundaries myself. This is all is tributary to Indian Creek over there, and so is the Geese Road outfall. It's going to all be contributory to Geese Road.
Right.
We're allowed to convey, just like they will be allowed to convey, you know, the 100-year storm event, they're going to convey it through their stormwater management facility, and then it will be released at a set release rate off the site. The Ward 1 drainage improvements are basically to prevent inundation of homes. I mean, so the water's all still falling there, and in reality, it's all still going to the southeast. It's just not going to the southeast fast enough to keep from inundating people's homes. So all we're doing is increasing the rate at which it goes to the southeast, underneath the county's box culverts, and then, again, that's considerably north of this site, so I...
Oh, no, but it all moves that direction.
And again, I don't think it goes straight south to this side. I think it's going to Indian Creek before it makes it to this side.
Okay.
I think this site is all going east as well.
Okay.
With the construction of the building, Drew was saying that, you know, we're looking to, you know, do an alteration to the fire code. Is the fire department on board with that?
I can address that. I can address that. It's actually an amendment or a requested variance to the building code. So, yes, we have discussed this with fire, we were actually, exactly what they're proposing in their ordinance is the direction we are going with the update to our building code that is going to be coming in a couple of months, and we've been working on it for probably over a year. So, yes, we were contemplating making a change that's going to accomplish what they're asking for in their variance, prior to this project coming.
Prior to us voting on it?
Yeah.
We're looking to accommodate these gentleman.
The actual change to the ordinance will come in after this project is voted on, that's why they're requesting the variance in their documents, but we will be bringing it, the summary, probably in another month.
And the fire department is good with that?
Yes.
Chief is good with that?
Yes, we have met many times and talked about it, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Drew, could you explain a little bit more what you're talking about with that Item Seven, the modification for Table 2.204 for the deck?
Yes, so basically, it's to address a situation where, the zoning code, when you have a deck over a certain height, I think it's three feet, it's considered part of the building, and for setbacks, it's considered part of the building setbacks. So we have a situation where, with the urban townhomes, where there's, certain units are facing rear-to-rear, and that Condition Seven was to attempt to address the, basically, those would encroach a little bit based on what our code requires today, and again, there was, basically, the previous plan did have some similar porches, or, excuse me, decks contemplated on the rear of those previous structures. So the Item Seven was to address the situation where you had two rears of units facing each other, where the decks would be closer than the setback that was otherwise originally granted in the ordinance, because of the fact that a deck is handled differently than a building, or is treated the same as a building, excuse me. So, the language is to address the rear-to-rear situations, we've been working with the applicant in terms of whether forty-eight is, a distance of forty-eight feet is sufficient, or alternate language needed to be provided, in speaking with them, before the meeting, it sounds like it might be about forty-six feet or so, just to address the worst-case scenario, which is not all of the units, but it's basically a couple of situations, which I think is kind of at the south end of the curve of, if I can point here, I think it's basically a situation where you have the unit-to-unit over in some of, in this particular section of the development, some of the other portions are further set back from each other, or each building is further set back from the other building, so that amount of, or that relief is not necessary in those cases, but we're just trying to address that certain situation where there's a couple of units that are closer to each other in terms of deck, the buildings are all sixty feet apart in rear-to-rear otherwise.
So it isn't a deal breaker, or it isn't anything that's going to be a big deal, it's just a matter of wanting to make sure the language conforms with our ordinances?
Right, and not creating a situation where it might be interpreted in the future, where it being a side-to-rear, or another situation where, you know, you have units kind of facing a couple of different directions, where the intent of the language is not to have those situations called out, it's the situation where it's a rear, two rear units, and not a rear to a side of one unit type, so that's what we're trying to clarify in terms of revised language.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I for one am happy to see this move forward, hopefully someday we'll get somebody on that commercial piece of property out there too, Mayor. But, happy to see it move forward, so I'm going to make the motion for approval of Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-one.
Second.
So, we got a motion by Brown, second by Meitzler, Scott, you got something?
Yes, if we could, in the motion, there are some things that we still need to tweak with the final ordinances that need attorney review, so if we could have that motion subject to attorney review, just because, you know, we've been moving forward with this, and there's been some changes that have gone along, we just want to make sure that attorneys have reviewed everything, and everything is, you know, according to.
Okay, so then, with that, you'll also be sending out a memo prior to the time it comes to the city council?
Correct.
Right? Okay, so I amend my motion in that regard. Elliot, you good with that? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, how about a roll call?
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
thirty-one nine ninety with an average sales price probably around two fifty, so that
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
would be the smallest unit over there.
Malley?
Aye.
So the average sales prices would be, the Glenshire, we figure right around two sixty-one
You were absent, Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
four ninety, which is the second, the third one in that lineup would be the Everton,
Aye.
Etac?
Aye.
Stark absent, Chanset absent, Wolf?
two fifty-nine four ninety, and then the Linden is two sixty-five, so right around
Aye.
And Salvati?
two fifty to two sixty-five is what we're anticipating the average sales price to be
Aye.
Okay, we move on then to Resolution eighteen dash forty-two dash R, Scott, do we need
on that particular product. The Urbans, we'll push it up a little bit, so the smallest one there, we're anticipating
the same language?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm going to move for approval of eighteen dash forty-two dash R, subject
a final average sales price around two sixty-two, then it moves up to two seventy-three, two
to attorney review.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Meitzler, all in favor?
eighty-seven, two ninety-five, eight ninety, and it goes all the way up to, the largest
Let's do roll call.
Brown?
Aye.
unit would be over three twenty at the end of the day.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Thank you.
Callahan?
Yep.
Aye.
One more question for you, with, quite recently, we've had a lot of different people
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
presenting different products to us, and it's caused a lot of communication in the
You were absent, Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
community of people saying, geez, when's that product going to be available, I might
Etac?
Aye.
Stark absent, Chanset absent, Wolf?
want to move in there, and we never really know when it's going to happen, do you have
Aye.
And Salvati?
Aye.
Okay, they're both approved, Drew, is it anticipated that this language will be changed a realistic date of when this is going to happen?
Well, it's funny you said that, I was just in our ops meeting today, and my boss has told me October, and that's not a choice, so, we'll have some.
and everything will be done before the next city council meeting? October for?
That's the goal, we're.
Of this year for sales, we want, two thousand and eighteen, we want models open
That's the goal?
Yep.
Okay, Jeff, did you have some, I'm sorry, Nick?
in, you know, September, October of this year, you know, we, our acquisition agreement
Now, I should ask this while they were up there, if the applicant can say, what's the price target between the two, for the two different styles?
allows us to do an early mass grading permit and some other things, we plan on taking advantage of that, and getting out and moving dirt while the weather's good, so, the second we can get out there, and, you know, as we work with the city, get the engineering plans approved, you know, we're not, we're ready to go, let's just put it that way.
Very good, good, well, we'll see you at the next council meeting.
Appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item number eight, Resolution eighteen dash forty-four dash R, authorizing execution of a contract for the two thousand and eighteen sidewalk and curb and gutter replacement program with Schroeder and Schroeder, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. Every year, we identify sidewalks that need to be replaced, I'm sure if you've been out walking, you've seen sidewalks with X's and marks and paint all over, those are the ones that are identified for replacement and repairs. The program this year was two eighteen, I think was in the budget, and we're looking, you know, with a ten percent contingency to award a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar bid on this. Anybody have any questions?
Can I just make a couple of comments, I was sharing with Alderman and Meitzler last week that, I got a call from some of the folks up at the H.C. Storm School, and apparently we've had some broken pieces of sidewalk up there that got marked up last year and then never got replaced, and so, John Kennedy tells me that part of the problem was, he marked the sidewalk, and then, I don't know, he had an accident or he got sick or something, and so he wasn't here for a large part of the season last year, and while they were putting in these occasional swaps of sidewalk, these ones on Van North Creek, which lead right down to Storm School, got inadvertently left off, and so, we've got them marked and remarked up there now, so I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, we're trying to catch up on anything that got, fell behind last year when our guy who was on the street, kind of overseeing the project, wasn't there to kind of follow it up, so if any of the other Aldermen have heard anything about some sidewalk, because the school PTOs, and I think it's a very healthy thing we got, are very interested in where these sidewalks are going to go and what kind of condition they're in, and so I think we may even have some members of the PTO or mothers out for walks that are now walking the city sidewalks, making sure that we got quality sidewalk going toward these schools, and literally all six of them that are out there, we got people walking around looking, so if anybody knows of something, let us know.
Those areas that you're talking about with eight by H.C. Storm School, is that part of this bid package, or is?
Well, it's marked, the sidewalk's marked, and John tells me that it's going to get taken, it's not much, it's just, you know, slab here and a slab there, it's probably ten feet maybe in total length, but there was a couple of them that are right on the final route to school, and, because there's a break in the middle of it, the water, in the winter time, all runs to that area and then freezes, and you had some kids slip on them and whatever have you, so, it's that type of a thing, but the sidewalks are being watched very closely by the citizens, and I'm very pleased about that, because when we started the sidewalk expansion program a number of years ago, we used to invite each Alderman to give us sidewalks in their ward, and I know Alderman Wolf was very instrumental in getting some stuff accomplished for Alice Gusterson School along these lines, and so we've got, most of the school is kind of taken care of, but there's probably a piece here or a piece there that still needs to be done, and that sidewalk enhancement program that we had going for a number of years, really was one of the most welcome programs I think I've seen in my time in office by the residents, that we filled in a lot of the voids, and they were literally in every ward and every place, somehow or another stretch had been forgotten, we got a lot of sidewalk put in that was now really appreciated.
There's still a number of places that need sidewalks?
Absolutely.
Like Republic and a few others.
It's interesting to go talk to some of those residents in those non-sidewalk areas and hear what they say about it.
But some of them are asking.
Some of them are, and some of them aren't, so.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
I could just make a couple of comments, if there are residents who notice that there is any unsafe condition on the sidewalks, that they can contact Public Works and will come out, and if the situation merits, we can add particular areas to the program, because we don't want to leave any unsafe condition out there. The second thing is to see which sidewalks are included on the city's website homepage, you can go to the bottom of the homepage and click on City Maps, and there are all the construction projects, you can see which roads are going to be redone this year, and you can see which sidewalks are going to be redone this year.
Well, if no one has any other questions, I will make a motion that we recommend a council Resolution eighteen dash forty-four dash R, authorizing execution of contracts for the two thousand and eighteen sidewalk and curb replacement program with Schroeder and Schroeder Incorporated for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
So moved.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion.
Seconded, and now we're going to vote on it.
Do it twice.
Do we need a roll call?
No.
No, I think we can do it, just voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, if you're going to talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine, Resolution eighteen dash forty-five dash R, authorizing execution of a master service agreement with Baxter and Woodman, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. I got the right one here, this is eighteen forty-seven, that's the first one, those are both in the same memo.
Eighteen forty-five.
Eighteen forty-five, first one, eighteen forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me make sure I got the right one.
It's master service.
Yes, the master services agreement with Baxter and Woodman, you want to go ahead and explain this?
Yeah, so, a couple of weeks ago, council approved a shortlisted consultant for our construction projects for next three years, the shortlisted consultant's list included Baxter and Woodman, we currently do not have a master services with them, rest of the consultants we do, the master services agreement kind of helps smoothen out the process of executing contract with them, it's an overall overarching contract that they sign, and then, we, anytime we do a project with them, we do it as a task list. Baxter and Woodman is going to be the Phase Three Construction Engineering Consultant for our Ward One project, so we are coming in front of you to execute an MSA or Master Services Agreement with the Baxter and Woodman.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
With all the master service agreements we have out there, are they all identical, or are some of them different based on who you're negotiating with for that agreement?
There are some changes being made, because not all consultant like the language out there, but whenever there is a change made to our master agreement, we run it by Kevin Drenal's office and make sure he's okay with all those changes, so this one has been also blessed by Drenal.
I have a question too, and there's a couple of things that were highlighted in here, they're in a, like, purple, and there, one of them is, you know, outside subconsultants' billing should be marked up by a factor of blank, that's just left blank in there?
See, I believe since then, we established that it will be zero, so they are not going to put any.
So that's not going to be in there, okay, that was the one question I had, because that was still left open, and then are we just waiting to figure out who's the contact person for the names that are supposed to be in there for both the?
Yeah, I believe we have, since we posted this, we have got all those information back from Baxter and Woodman, so for council approval, we'll post that updated.
That's really all I wanted to make sure of.
So you just got that information then, so, too late to put it on to here for tonight?
Yeah, because we were under the Friday deadline for COW.
Okay, any other questions?
And Baxter and Woodman is one of the five that we've selected on the shortlist, who are the other four again, could you help me with that?
I knew that you'd ask that question.
Why were you not prepared?
I can probably go back to the COW meeting agenda.
You know what, you can just.
I emailed you.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
I know CMT is one, not CMT, V three, WBK, WBK.
WBK and Baxter and Woodman, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll make the motion that we send Resolution eighteen forty-five dash R to city council to authorize a master services agreement with Baxter and Woodman to provide construction engineering services.
Second.
Voice vote?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Then we'll go on to items number ten and eleven, which are Resolution eighteen forty-six dash R, authorizing the two thousand and eighteen Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction Contract with Performance Construction, and then the next one is Resolution eighteen forty-seven dash R, authorizing the Task Order Number One with Baxter and Woodman for Construction Engineering Services for that project of the two thousand and eighteen Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. This is just moving forward with the actual work on the stuff that we've already talked about, if anybody has any questions on this, Mike?
Yeah, so, Rahat, we're upsizing some drainage to bring the water from the first ward out and get it under the road and take it away, how big are those pipes, and what's the rating on those pipes, are they a hundred-year flood pipes, are they ten-year flood pipes, what are they?
Those are sixty-inch pipe, what is going to get constructed at, along the Kirk Road and the crossing, they are designed for a typical ten-year storm, and, you know, it's a sixty-inch pipe, it's a five-foot pipe, I can probably walk inside that pipe, so, it's a big one, sixty.
I'm familiar with the size of sixty.
It's all, it's going to be all concrete pipe, so that's what is getting constructed.
But it's a ten-year.
It will be able to handle a typical ten-year. city council to authorize a master service agreement with Baxter and Woodman to provide construction engineering services.
Second.
Voice vote?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Then we'll go on to items number ten and eleven, which are resolution eighteen forty-six dash R, authorizing the two thousand and eighteen Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction Contract with Performance Construction. And then the next one is resolution eighteen forty-seven dash R, authorizing the task order number one with Baxter and Woodman for construction engineering services for that project of the two thousand and eighteen Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is just moving forward with the actual work on the stuff that we've already talked about. If anybody has any questions on this? Mike?
Yeah, so Rahat, we're upsizing some, some drainage to bring the water from the first ward out and get it under the, under the road and take it away. How big are those pipes, and what's the rating on those pipes? Are they a hundred-year flood pipes, are they ten-year flood pipes? What are they?
Those are sixty-inch pipe, what is going to get constructed at, along the Kirk Road and the crossing. They are designed for a typical ten-year storm, and, you know, it's a sixty-inch pipe, it's five-foot pipe, I can probably walk inside that pipe. So, it's, it's, it's a big one, sixty.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the size of sixty.
It's all, it's going to be all concrete pipe, so that, that's what is getting constructed.
But it's a ten-year.
It, it will be able to handle a typical ten-year storm.
Okay, what if we have a hundred-year storm?
We, from our phase one preliminary engineering study that we have shown to you, I believe last year, it shows that there will be some water pounding on the street, which will be there for anywhere between a few minutes to a couple of hours, but slowly it will disappear.
Okay, and, and my concern is this, I mean, you know how I feel about that, so it's kind of disappointing to me that it's only ten-year, but that's, that is what it is. My concern is this, is if we have a continued rain, I mean, generally, it's, it's a heavy rain falls in a short amount of time, is a hundred-year flood, but if we have a continued rain, that water's not staying on the road for twenty minutes to two hours, it's staying on the road for hours, and that's my concern, because then it becomes a safety issue for people if they're driving on the road. It just, I mean, I, in, in my neighborhood in the first ward, the road has to shut down on Woodland Hills Road, okay? It just, the, the culvert can't handle it, as it goes, the Mahoney Creek Tributary can't handle it, the water just blows out, comes onto the road, the, the storm sewers can't handle it, and it comes blowing out of the storm sewers, and you can't drive on the road. And that's my concern, it becomes a safety issue when someone is driving home from work or wherever they're going and they're in their vehicle, it's a safety issue. And so, I'm concerned about that. And so, I understand a six, sixty-inch pipe, it's a big pipe, but I've, you know, I, I've seen pipes in, in, in Hinsdale where they're ninety-six inch pipes, and so, they take their water away. So that's, that's my concern. So that's, I don't mean to give you all my concerns, but just asking about the question. So, I don't mean to dominate, I'm sorry.
Now, I, I, I agree with you, hopefully it's a, it's a, i- if it is an extended period of rain, it's a, it's a low intensity rain, not like a hundred-year rain, and then hundred-year rain, and then hundred-year rain. So hopefully, you know, it's, continuous rain is good in a way, but if it is a low intensity rain.
That's a tough answer, hopefully, you know.
Alderman, I mean, the storm you described is nineteen ninety-six, and in nineteen ninety-six, no one can design around that. I mean, we could design around that, but you guys would have to vote for a fifteen percent property tax.
Two thousand and fifteen also.
No, two thousand and fifteen's duration of the storm, if you recall, was only about an hour, maybe even less. It was not a twenty-four hour period.
And I know you couldn't get, I couldn't drive, I drive a truck, I couldn't drive on the road.
No, you're correct, and that's why we're sitting here tonight with bonding funds to, to do this, because during that storm event, that storm event may still result in pounding on the road, but it will not have inundation of the houses like we saw, and within, as Rahat said, within a relatively short period of time, the inundation's going to be gone. You were just describing a storm where the inundation would last for hours and hours and hours, that's nineteen ninety-six, and that we're not going to be able to design around.
Well, I don't know, we should try to.
Well...
We should try to.
It's just not realistic, I mean, short of, short of...
And where's it going to go after it goes through a ninety-six inch pipe?
Right.
If we get it to Kirk Road and then it can't go through the sixty-inch pipe that's there, it, there, you can't put it through a funnel. That's our, that's the big problem, is where it ends up is what has to be the biggest, and that's one of our choke points that we have to deal with. How big is the pipe out there now that this is going to replace?
I believe it's a twenty-four inch pipe right now.
Twenty-four? So, the volume of that goes up, what, three or four times when you go to a sixty-inch? So to me, if it can take three to four more times of water and volume through there, we're doing the right thing and we're going in a realistic manner as big as we can, with what we can fund.
So, so the Prairie Commons that you just looked at, the difference between that subdivision and Woodland Hills, that area, is the detention pond. So, they are also designing it with a ten-year storm pipe, so the water is going to go through a ten-year storm pipe, go to a detention pond, which is going to keep hundred-year rain even water. The only difference is, in this case, for Ward One, it's going to go through a ten-year pipe, it just don't have the place for a hundred-year storm detention facility. So it, it, we are kind of limited by what's out there right now. Again, I think, I think we have accepted the fact that some of the streets might flood for a bigger intensity rain, and, and that's the reality, just because it was developed without a detention pond.
Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I hear where Mike's coming from on this, you know, it's, it's, you're spending money and you're not completely fixing a problem. I'm going to vote for it, because I understand what constraints they're dealing with, mostly it really boils down to money. What I don't like about it is, I know that the, a road base's worst enemy is water, and we're saying it's okay to put water on a road base. So, that's, that's my real issue with it, is, is, you know, the, the potential harm that we're creating to these road bases in fixing a water problem. But, again, it boils down to money. So I'll vote for it, but that's, I just wanted to voice my concern on it.
Well, I, and, and I, I agree with you, but I, I also note, in two thousand and fifteen, you know, there are people on Larkspur that, I mean, they had water pouring into their house. I mean, they had split levels, and, I mean, I was there helping them, you know, get all their furniture out of their lower levels, and, I mean, and I'm, I'm willing to deal with some water pounding on, you know, on the road for a little bit, and I think that's, that's the point. The, the biggest issue is, you, you don't, we don't want Noah's Ark, you know, out there with, you know, trying to get furniture out and all that, we want people's homes dry, correct?
So, I still got to continue my discussion here, is, and I, I appreciate us, you know, I, I represent the people in the first ward, and this is for the people in the first ward, so I'm going to support this, and I, I know, I know what you're saying, Rahat, believe me. But the lowest point of the first ward, I believe, is at the intersection of Wintergreen Terrace and Woodland Hills Road. And the people on, in Wintergreen Terrace are people that I'm hearing from these last two weeks ago, who are saying, you know, they got issues because the people in the Fourteenth Colony in the backyards are draining into their homes, and draining into their yards and flooding their yards. So I guess I have two points to make. We need to start looking further north on Woodland Hills Road in the first ward, okay? Because that is the lowest point, I, I know from experience, and, and maybe we're looking at this wrong also. I mean, we have to get the water away, and how do we do that? We do that through our, our pipes and our catch basins. But, you know, most of the people who, and I, and I've been thinking about this the last few weeks, and you probably would agree with me, Gary, the, the complaints that we're getting from people is there water coming into their homes through their backyards, and we're not dealing with their backyards. And maybe that's something we should, you know, think outside the box on that. It might be a whole lot cheaper than, than doing it in, in the roads.
You got to remember that area, and I'm speaking broadly in that area, was developed in the woods. It wasn't developed with mass earthwork, because they wanted to save the trees. So the, the grading in that area, again, broadly speaking, isn't the greatest, it never has been the greatest, because people wanted to save the trees. Prairie Commons, you know, modern subdivision will have defined overflow routes and be fully, fully mass earthworked, there won't be a tree left on the site when they're done, and people moving into that subdivision understand that. So, you know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, forty years ago, when those homes were built in that area, they wanted to save the trees, and when you don't mass earthwork and you don't create defined swales, and you don't create defined overflow routes, you end up with situations like you're describing. And I guess I, I question whether people are physically getting water pouring in their houses, or do they have soggy yards, and they have soggy backyards and their sump pumps are running a lot. My guess is probably more the latter than the former. I, I doubt that there's probably water pouring down, you know, into, physically pouring into people's houses.
But it is coming into their yards, and so their sump pumps are not keeping up.
Exactly, so it's, it's a yard drainage issue, which, which the city, it's...
Well, the city might look to address that, is all I'm saying, I'm just thinking outside the box.
I don't know how we can address that, though, short of regrading people's yards, private property.
We might, maybe we should look into that.
And, and over the last thirty or forty years, all the little projects that people do in their yards that change the grading from yard to yard or year to year, when people put in different things in their yard, that has a huge impact. Every time somebody puts a shed in their backyard and raises that, and the water runoff from that comes right back at their house, all those things affect that.
Absolutely.
And that's one of the worst things, I think, that has happened in a lot of those older neighborhoods, is that there's, I don't know, that there's any way to change that, once that's been done.
Well, I just know, I just know at the Fourteenth Colony, they drain down the yards into the people who are on the south side of Wintergreen Terrace, and then that water comes down, it might not come flowing right into their homes, but it comes into their yards, and somehow, through the, the drain pipes, it gets into their house. And so, and...
In this time of year...
And in the two thousand and fifteen flood, those people all flooded. I know, because I was pumping water in those homes. And so I, if we're going to start investing money, I'd like to have people not have their homes flood, and that's all I'm getting at. And so, you guys are the engineers, figure it out for us. I don't know what else to say.
We can do the best we can do in the public right of way, and private property or former woods, which are now homes and aren't graded very well, you're never going to solve those problems, short of picking out trees and mass earthwork.
Well, maybe we should think outside the box to pu, to push water out of someone's yard, you know, do, you know, you know, do, you know, directional boring and get it out of, out of the yard, put a catch basin or something, an area drain, and, and get it out of the yard. I don't know, but it'd be a whole lot cheaper than, than digging into the road and...
But once we get it out of their yard, we need a place to put it, and that's what we're constructing. We're constructing the backbone system that will convey water out of the neighborhood. You can't get it out of their yard and then have nowhere...
And then have nowhere to put it, I understand.
This, this project actually starts at Geese, and it'll work its way eventually after all the phases, it'll work its way west and north. And then our next project that we've identified is, is the lower area there on Kirk Road where Mahoney Creek starts, Tributary starts. That'll work, that'll kind of go west from there, to benefit all those properties down to Mahoney Creek.
I was, I was just, I'm sorry, I was just going to say that, I mean, that's part of what was going on with, with the clearing there of Mahoney Creek, and that, and that drain off of Fermi is to help mitigate, help check some of that water to at least when we have a big storm, that you're, you're limiting what's coming down Mahoney Creek.
Right. Because we take now, Mahoney Creek takes water from Kirk Road, Mahoney Creek Tributary takes from Kirk Road and takes from Fermi level.
You've got five lanes of Kirk Road, almost a mile's worth, that drains to that low area unrestricted.
Right.
So when that road was reconstructed back in the eighties or nineties, if I recall, they didn't do detention back then, and all that water ended up right in Mahoney Creek unrestricted. So the project we're talking about, the next one that's on, on the list, puts a restrictor down there and forces that water into that basin, so that it doesn't flow down unrestricted, at least it'll flow at a lower rate towards Mahoney Creek.
Dave?
Alan? So, I think it's important to mention, though, that we've gotten, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven bids on this that range from a million three seventy-eight to a million six twenty, and the engineer's estimate was a million five eighty-five, so a low bid came in considerably lower than the engineer's estimate, so that's a good thing. My, I just wanted to mention that, but my question is, is with doing all this storm sewer work done, are we putting these roads on the street improvement plan for next year?
No, they are, the way we planned it is, after the entire Ward One done, then we'll go back and resurface all the streets. So now it will be all patched, patched with only binder cores, which is cheaper than a typical surface cores, so we'll be using a cheaper material so that it holds up only three, four, five years. And then at five-year mark, when everything, all the storm sewer improvement in that ward is completed, we are going to go back and resurface all the street.
So all the streets will get done after all of Ward One is done?
Yes, that's the plan.
So, when, when you go through here now, and you tear out the streets and you just put binder back in, are you going to leave it down an inch and a half at the curb line?
No, it will be all the way flushed with the existing surface, then we'll go back and grind two inches and put back two inches.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. I'll scroll back up here. This is... I'll make a motion that we recommend to council resolution eighteen dash forty-six dash R, authorizing execution of contract with performance construction and engineering for the two thousand and eighteen Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction Phase One in the amount not to exceed one million five hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Any questions?
Want to do roll call?
Roll call.
And that kind of money?
Yep.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
You were absent. Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Etac?
Aye.
Stark and Chanset absent.
Okay, she probably want to talk about that one, right?
Yes, I would like to talk about that.
Okay, want to go on then to eighteen forty-seven R?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we recommend to council, resolution eighteen dash forty-seven dash R, authorizing execution of task order number one for construction engineering with Baxter and Woodman in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand, eight, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
The engineering contract for the work that we just passed on to council for approval. Any questions? Can we have a motion second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Good to see that done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve, resolution eighteen dash forty-three R, authorizing execution of a contract for well number six and eight rehabilitation. Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, we, our wells, shallow wells number six and eight, requiring some maintenance. They, they're manufacturers saying they should be serviced every seven to ten years for pump and motor rehabilitation and well inspections. So staff has been examining them for weekly, monthly, been going through it, they found that six has last rehabilitated in two thousand and seven, so it's due for rehabilitation, and well number eight is having some issues, and that was worked on in two thousand and eleven, that was put in two thousand and eleven. I remember when we did that, so I'll leave it here and take it away.
Excuse me, I'm sort of new at public speaking, so forgive me a little bit. So, wells six and eight are both shallow wells, ranging from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty feet. Both are Byron Jackson Type H or Mercury Seal Motors, meaning they have a Mercury Seal between the pump and the motor, which keeps the water out of the motor. Manufacturers recommend pulling these pumps and motors every seven to ten years for inspection and repairs. It's kind of like a tune-up, if you will. Pull it out, they change oil, they grease bearings, they, they check the motor for, for spikes, amps, that type of thing. Byron Jackson's sole source for these pumps and motors is Lane Christensen. Lane is the only Byron Jackson certified personnel installer in Illinois. Our, our consulting engineer, EEI, and I both feel very strongly that using a Byron Jackson certified installer will get us the very best bang for our buck. The city has had very good luck with Lane over the years. An RFP was sent to Lane, and the pricing was very favorable. It was five point five percent under the engineering estimate. EEI and myself have, have had, have both had very bad experiences in dealing with competitors in the Byron Jackson H Motors. I ask for your approval to waive formal bids and approve awarding wells six and eight rehab to Lane Christensen out of Aurora, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents, which includes a ten percent contingency.
Any comments or questions for Jeremy?
I got a question, Mike.
Dave?
Jeremy, how, in your experience, how often do you see that when you pull it out for maintenance, general maintenance is this, is called, where they pull it out and they say, you know what, this motor really is beyond repair and we're going to have to replace it?
Twenty-five percent of the time. Yeah. Both motors are running very good right now. Well, seven is just being pulled for routine maintenance, it's about eleven years old, or eleven years in the ground now, it's past its, it's time to be pulled. For these wells, we try to be a little proactive rather than reactive, you know, summer's coming, we want to be ready to go. Well, eight, on the other hand,'s got a little shimmy to it, amp draw's a little high, GPM's a little low, so that's a little concerning to us, it's, the motor seems fine, it's not overamping, more than likely it's a bearing issue or a bowl issue.
So with the GPMs being low, it's not a matter of, of wa, running low on water on that particular well?
No, no, because our static pumping, our, we watch specific capacities, we watch a whole slew of things and collect data all the time on them. We watch a whole slew of things and collect data all the time on them. What we're seeing is more like a bind, if you will, friction, like a bearing or a bowl. Something's chugging it down just a little bit. So, we want to get that looked at before summer hits and we need that guy.
And do these wells have issues like the deep ones did where there were, you know, possibility of pulling sand through them where they impel it up or?
We do have a couple sand separators in there. They do get chewed up a little bit on the impellers with sand.
Because that was one of the things, I know that the last time I think we did one of the deep wells, we had to pull it out and it was early service on it and it was really torn up. And I think that got caught by the checks that you guys do by watching amperage or
Exactly.
Draw on them.
That one's got a sand separator on it now, so.
So, Jeremy, what happened to number eight, well number eight?
Nothing's happened to it. We're just, we tamed it down a little bit. It's not our leader right now. Again, it's got a little, it's a little high on amps. We don't know exactly what's wrong with it. Motor seems fine. It's chugging down a little bit, probably some sort of friction in the impellers. They might be worn down a little bit. There might be a bearing loose. It's got a little shimmy to it.
Lane Christensen will address that.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Meitzler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Before we put that down, consent?
Sure. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Okay, item thirteen, Resolution eighteen dash forty-eight dash R for eighteen oh one Suncast Lane, thirty-five KV upgrade service expansion. Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, this is, Suncast is expanding and we're going to put in a thirty-five K underground, thirty-five K electric service for them. They will reimburse us for it. That's pretty much it. Happy to see that they're putting an addition on and that we're servicing them. It looks like they might be staying here a while.
This is for the addition they've already put on, right?
Yes, yes.
So, anything you need to add to that?
No, we are also very happy that they are expanding, they are adding three more transformers and a future fifth transformer they're talking about also. So, yeah, it's, we have been discussing this project with them for a while. They are finally moving forward. They have also expanding their railroad spar to get to their warehouse. So, it's all coming together for them at the same time. So, yeah, it's a pass-through project, you know. We are hiring the contractor. We'll be doing rest of the work, pulling the wires and attaching to the transformer and all that. So, and then Suncast is going to reimburse us for all this cost.
Right. And it looks good that we've, you know, Arcon's a good contractor, they got a good price to us, so we're not inflating any prices to Suncast. We're doing our due diligence with that. So, anybody have any questions or comments?
One question.
Alan?
Are we adding any provision for any expansion when we put this conduit through there or are we just putting in just what they need to do this upgrade?
So, they talked about a future fifth transformer, so we are making provisions right now so that in future we don't have to go.
So, we don't have to dig anything else? We just have the conduit there and just run the wires through it? Okay.
That's what was my question, to make sure that if that was possible, that we do that so then we're only making the trench ones.
Right.
Do you know what the projected increase in usage, total usage for electricity is with this?
I don't think they've told us. Ultimately, they were going to get to about five or six megawatt at that facility, but I don't, this particular expansion, I don't think that we have.
Anybody else?
I can just give an example. They've got one machine in there right now. They're ordering six more to be installed this year, and they say there's another, an additional two scheduled for 2019.
And those are the molding machines, right?
Gigantic molding machines.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Atak, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent?
Consent, sure.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Item fourteen, project status. Laura?
Sure. Wanted to give you an update on the community survey. We've had about two hundred and fifty responses to the survey, which was just published on April fourth. A postcard should go out to every single household with a web address to go to, to fill out the survey. And so, we hope that we'll have at least a thousand responses to the survey, given that we still have the rest of the month to receive those responses. We contacted our other governmental bodies and asked them if they would help us spread the word. So, Batavia Public Schools, the Park District, the library, Main Street and Chamber are helping us to get the word out, as well as people advertising it by sharing it on their own Facebook page so that all of their neighbors know if they want their voices to be heard in this community survey, and the results of which will help us to inform the strategic planning process that they should take the time to fill that out. So, we hope that we'll get some good responses there. Also, wanted to share with you a story. I'm familiar with the twelve fifty Douglas spec building that was built last year, and the owner of that building has been working trying to get a user in there, and they're going to be taking up approximately, Scott, fifty thousand square feet of the building? Sixty-three thousand square feet. And we've been meeting with the building owners, their architects, with the new tenant who's coming in, as well as their agents too, because the timing has to be very quick on this. But I think that things, there's been a very collaborative process to meet everybody's timeline, and I just want to give a shout out to Community Development for the things that you've been able to do to move your schedules around to make sure to make that happen. The owners of that building also have the entitlements to build another building across the street from there, and so we know it's important to make a good first impression with, you know, how it was with this first building. So, we're looking forward to having a new business here in Batavia. What kind of business? It's a logistics business. They're called Focus Logistics, and they just recently sold their previous location in West Chicago. And so, they're going to be vacating there and moving their business here to Batavia. Just an update on the One Washington Place project that goes to Plan Commission on April eighteenth. We received within just the last two days updated traffic and environmental reports that we are digesting right now and in preparation for that meeting. Also, Funway, the owner of Funway came in last week and met with staff about a number of things having to do with the expansion project that they would like to get started as soon as possible. So, I think that we were able to come to agreement on most of those items and that that project will be moving forward as well. The solid waste contract bid is expected to go out on April sixteenth and with a return date of early May. And also, various departments within the city that typically utilize seasonal employees during the summer, now is the time when we recruit for those positions. And we've seen a great deal of value in being able to hire seasonal workers during the summertime. It's a time of year when there's a lot to be done, particularly in public works and also in community development. And so, those seasonal workers really help us out a lot. So, we'll be recruiting for those. And that's all I have unless you have any questions. Mike?
Oh, I just had another. That's why I was jumping the gun.
Oh, no problem.
Sorry, I won't do that.
Okay. The Funway comment you made.
Yeah.
Is that anything that we're going to have to see council action on or is that just building permit stuff that they're working with Community Development on?
I think that they will be asking for a variance from the code. There's an issue with, the expansion has to do with a new kind of go-kart track, and they would like to locate an above-the-ground gas tank. And that is currently not allowed under our current building code, so they would need to seek a variance in order to allow them to have an above-the-ground storage tank for the fuel for the cars.
Also, they have purchased the old producer's chemical property, and so they're going to be taking down the building, putting a small expansion on the Funway building itself, putting a high-speed go-kart track and some other modifications in that area. They do need to rezone the property because it's zoned industrial, and then a plant development is part of that, or variances depending on how they're actually going to apply for it. So, there is some zoning relief that'll go in front of Plan Commission, it'll subsequently come to council.
Okay. Any others?
I have another.
Alderman O'Brien?
Well, we have Jeremy here tonight, and I just saw this, that we won a fluoride compliance award from IDPH. And I guess it's a tough award to win, and so, thank you, Jeremy, and congratulations.
Thanks, Mike.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the council. Last week, Laura and I had the opportunity to go to lunch with the executive director of the Batavia Park District. And we ended up going out to Appleville, although we didn't go, you know, just local to have lunch. And we got in there and some of the folks from Holy Cross Church were in there having lunch, and we started a conversation with them about some stuff, and they started some conversations with us. And I think we brought the Park District and the church together with some ideas on some stuff. I don't want to jump anybody's thunder here, so I'm not talking about other governments, but we got the Park District and Holy Cross together, which I think could mean some very interesting things for, in a positive nature, for Batavia in the days to come. So, I only share that as kind of a prelude to the idea that as we talked over with Allison about things that were going on, I think I got the message from her that she thought maybe it was potentially the time for the Batavia Park District and the city of Batavia to maybe come together and have a meeting between the two bodies. And with no particular item on the agenda, maybe each of us just take a half hour and talk about things we're doing specifically in the development realm of these new houses because, you know, she was curious to know about the project we just approved tonight. And, you know, there's some other rumors about some other stuff happening on the west side, and she was wanting to know about that. And so, you know, I think that's probably a good idea that we, maybe sometime in the next few weeks or whenever, next couple of months, we'll set a Tuesday night, and instead of us doing the normal committee meeting, we'll just have the Park District come in and have a conversation with all of us, even sitting here and just talk about stuff that's going on. Because as we talked, she brought up subjects about stuff that literally was in every ward that's represented here. So, I mean, I think there's some commonality of interest and concerns and ideas out there that we could share and maybe bring along some neat things to happen in Batavia. And as I said and thought about that over the past week since we had the meeting, I'm thinking, again, because of the development that suddenly seems to be here on the doorstep and because I think the council needs to do it, I think it may not be a bad idea that we also entertain another night and we invite in our friends from the school board to have them come in and sit. You know, we just set up the table here, and we've done this now. It's been a couple of years since last we've done this. But I think, you know, there's several new people on both of those boards who, I guess I may know who they are, but I can't tell you that I've really ever sat down and chatted with them. And I think it's important, you know, as the town we are and the relationships we're trying to build and the issues that we're faced with, that it would be, I think, a neat thing for us to do to continue to have some conversation. So, I just wanted to share with the council, unless somebody here has a big problem with it, that I will intend in the next few weeks to probably extend an invitation to both the school and park to come on different nights, but to come down and on a committee meeting, and maybe we can talk for an hour and a half, and if there's any pressing business, we can take care of it. Maybe we'll tell them to come at seven thirty, and with Alderman Brown's new starting time, we can get other things taken care of.
Own some.
Yeah, you own that one. That's, that's the, so we can get that, some stuff taken care of, and then we can spend the rest of the night just talking to the school and one night to the park. And nothing else, give them both a development review as to how we think things are going and where things are headed. And I, today I had the opportunity to have lunch with Holy Cross Church, and they have some stuff that they were, had some questions about. And as we were talking about it, Father Parker shared with me that Holy Cross Church has had a significant increase in enrollment at their school. And as of today, they got four hundred and thirty-two kids out in that school on Main Street. And they may be in here looking to do some stuff, new additions and whatever in the days ahead. So, and, you know, talking, I haven't, you know, I don't really want to get into the whole school world, but I also had talked with the ministers at Emmanuel Lutheran, and I know they've got a pretty good enrollment at their church. So, when you think of Batavia as a community with six elementary schools, the truth of the matter is, we really have eight because we have Holy Cross and we have Emmanuel Lutheran, which are, and then we have the new academy out there on East Loson Street, although they don't have that many students. But we certainly have a wide variety of educational offerings. And in talking to some of my fellow peers in the real estate market, I'm hearing from some of them that, you know, if they bring a new client into Batavia, one of the driving tenants or anchor tenants or anchor things that's happening in town that seems to be attractive to people is the variety of school opportunities that exist here.
And Montessori.
And Montessori, yes. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different school things here, and you're talking to these younger couples about moving in here. That seems to be one of the things that people are wanting to get to. The other thing that they, interesting, they share with me is, there's a lot of people who have told Realtors, they want to get into Batavia so they can get into the athletic program at Batavia High School. And that's, some people are buying a house based on the presence of the athletic program and the record of that and the variety of programs that are out there. So, those of us who have a strong connection to that program, we certainly have helped to sell a very popular aspect of Batavia. So, it never ceases to amaze me what is the driving forces that cause people to want to look at our community. And I wanted to close tonight, as you know, I serve as chairman of the CMAP Council of mayors in Chicago.
I heard you on the radio today.
And we, we are, as a region, we are facing some very challenging issues here because not every town has all the things going for it that we have in Batavia. And there's some cities in this region that specifically because of tax policies of the state and other things, legislation that's been enacted in Springfield, some people, other towns have taken some real significant hits as to their ability to keep them setting their heads above water. And you'll probably hear more about that as time marches forward. There's some stories on the TV news tonight about it already. So, I would just say that, you know, at the end of the day, Batavia has a lot of good things going for it, and I think a lot of that credit for all that goodness and vision belongs here in this room to you, ladies and gentlemen, for the job that you do to kind of make this town a responsive and strong place for people to want to come into and live. And that's probably one of the best compliments anybody can pay to you as a city council, that you are doing stuff that really is making Batavia shine and make it appear to be a nice place to bring your family into and put up your roots, put your roots down.
I think we need to give some attaboys to the prior city councils too because we certainly didn't do it on our own sitting here.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, it's been a long-term vision, and as you see me sitting at these meetings here dealing with these, I've got, up in my office, I've got several boxes of old letters and papers. And so, I've now gone through them, I've thrown a lot away, but I'm saving some stuff. And tonight I was dealing with all the memos and letters that I had in my files about the days when the former city council had big fights going on about what we were going to do with the old high school building sitting up at Batavia Avenue and Wilson. And the first rendition that I just went through here was all the angst that was spilled over where we're going to allow the school district to sell it to a residential home developer who was going to tear it down and build another, for all lack of a better description, river rain style apartment complex there. And that one ended up being defeated by the city council. And then it, you know, so things come and they go, and at the end of the day, what happened, happened. And at the end of the day, we were able to pull out this, the moon's aligned, and we were able to pull out this deal between the library board, the school board, and the Methodist Lutheran church. We traded a whole bunch of property up there on that street, and we now have the brand-new library, which has about a thousand users a day coming into it. And it's probably the number one anchor tenant of activity in downtown Batavia on a daily basis. Another one that was a pretty vicious fight was, there was a proposal to do kind of the same thing at Bellevue Place on South Jefferson Street. And at the end of the day, that one went down. went down in flames, and then eventually, some other folks showed up and said they wanted to do it a little bit different, and the deal was, is that they got to build upscale townhouses around it, but the deal was, is that they also had to agree to restore the historic building and put it into a shape that could be then utilized and hopefully kept in place for another hundred years, given its national historical importance that it has. So, we were able to achieve that. But I share all that with you, because, you know, we sit here and we, we have arguments, and things come and they go, some things don't work, and some things work. I shared today, when I was having lunch with Father Parker at Holy Cross, the story about when they decided to move the Catholic church from Overend on Van Huron and Wilson out to where it is now, and I don't know if any of you were with me at that moment or not, but we had quite a fight in the, first there was members of the congregation that didn't want to move the church. Then they got into, they had to sell the church to raise some money to be able to build what they did out there, and the first developer came in, and he was going to tear down most of that block that's still there, and use the church building as a, as a kind of a cultural center for, again, another kind of eight, or senior citizen subsidized housing project, and that one went five to five on the city council at the time, so Jeff got to break the vote, and I voted in favor of it, and so it was moving forward, and then at the end of the day, the developer could not perform, and the deal fell flat. And so, then another few months, the Batavia Park District came by and said, we'll take it over for an east-side center, but we got to pass a referendum to do it. So, then they had to wait for the next election timeframe to come, and they flew the referendum, and it passed. And so, again, you know, as I go through my paper and I sit here, we got all kinds of history here of things that didn't propose, that had a lot of controversy about them, a lot of aldermen took a lot of hits, for whatever reason, people for it or against it, and many times, the first rendition didn't work, so then we went to the second or the third, and at the end of the day, something got built, and quite honestly, I'm sitting here today, and as the mayor, I don't have anybody complaining to me anymore about the new library, I don't have anybody complaining to me about that Bellevue Place saving, and I don't have anybody complaining to me about what happened over at Holy Cross Church. At the end of the day, seeming to, most people are fairly happy that that's what happened, but that's kind of the history for it, but I, if you ever are interested, want to read some of this, I can set you up with a notebook full of materials, and you can read about all the things that never happened, because there's a whole industry of them here in Batavia.
Okay. Any other others? Motion adjourned?
So moved, second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.